Good evening and welcome to the January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five Regular Salem City Council Meeting. It will now come to order. We will have the invocation given by Pastor Brian Riegel, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we are grateful for this city. We are grateful for all the mercy and grace that you show us daily and how you take care of us and you provide for us. Father, I think of Psalm twenty-three where David says, "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want." Father, we are looking to you as our shepherd. We're looking for you, for direction, as a city. Father, I pray for each leader that is here this evening. Father, do you give them wisdom as they're leading our city and in the direction it should go? And Father, we pray for guidance. We pray for clarity of mind and wisdom. And Father, we know that when we follow you in your direction and we follow your word, that we can come to the place where we don't have to fear evil. Father, help us to be a light that shines bright in this city. Help us to live a life that would be glorifying to you in everything that we do. Lord, I pray that the words of our mouth and the meditations of our heart would be acceptable tonight in your eyes. And we ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the rule?
Mrs. Baer?
Present.
Ms. Bricker?
Here.
Mr. Gayno?
Here.
Mr. Stockman?
Here.
Mr. Zellers?
Here.
Five members.
Is there a motion to excuse Mr. Knoll? And a second?
Second.
Mr. Gayno?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Ms. Bricker?
Yes.
Mr. Gayno?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
And a motion to excuse Mr. Newman. Mrs. Baer? And a second, Ms. Bricker?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Ms. Bricker?
Yes.
Mr. Gayno?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Is it blank or is we, do we, do we have people? Oh, Jim, did you want to come up to the microphone and speak?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm very happy to be here. I came to introduce myself. My name is Jim Harrington. I live over on Lincoln Avenue. I grew up in Salem. I graduated from Salem High School in nineteen eighty-two. And I just wanted to announce my intentions to run for the council at-large slot that's opening up in the May primary. I was very, why am I running? I love Salem, okay? I grew up here, even though I was in Chicago for thirty-five years, I've been back here for four years. I had a very positive, positive, very positive outcome with helping with getting the new school levy passed, which provided a win for the city. And should I win, I would like to work with all of you to get more wins for Salem. That's it.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Everyone has received minutes from the January seventh meeting. Are there any additions, changes, or deletions? We do not have any petitions this evening. Kind of went out of order here, but we're getting back into it. As far as the report of city officials, Mayor Dickey.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate Rich Snyder on his position that he accepted with the city as the full-time housing inspector. So hopefully, he will be a great asset to the department and get those inspections completed a lot quicker than we can with one part-time person. Also, I would like to ask for an executive session to talk about a contract issue and a legal issue. And we can do it at the end if you would like to.
Any questions for Mayor Dickey?
Can we ask for a little?
Well, they could cover it now to happen at the end.
Okay, just a motion?
I'll make the motion to have executive session.
Is there a second? Mrs. Baer?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Ms. Bricker?
Yes.
Mr. Gayno?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
All right, we will go on to, do you want to do it at the very end?
It's fine.
Okay, we'll do it then. Law Director, Attorney Zellers?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any official report, but I note that we only have five members of council present tonight. We do have an issue to get to the ballot. We were hoping to pass tonight. We do have a council meeting.
Next week.
February, I think, one day before the deadline. So I would ask that council maybe talk to each other and make sure we're going to have six people here for the next meeting so that we can get that passed. Otherwise, we're going to have to set a special meeting to beat that deadline. So that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Attorney Zellers? Thank you. Auditor, Mr. Salvino?
Thank you, Madam President, members of council, administration. Just a quick recap on end of year. I gave you three sheets of paper. The first one is going to show the figure from two thousand and twenty-three heading into twenty-four, a carryover value, one point four, six nine, two ninety, point five nine. And the carryover value going into two thousand and twenty-five came in at one million, three, seven, nine, one, one, seven, point nine, six. So it's down ninety-one thousand, one twenty-nine, thirty-two from last year. And the second page that I gave you just shows you a breakdown of the income tax received year-to-date for two thousand and twenty-four, seven point, close to seven point six million. On two thousand and twenty-three, it was seven, close to seven point two million. The twenty-four to twenty-three percent change is a positive, six point oh five percent. So that's a good, it's a good number. And if you look at the second page of that, where the top says one percent income tax and the quarter of a percent, it shows two thousand and twenty-four year-to-date receipts, six million, seventy-two thousand, nine seventy-six, point sixty. The levy total came in at one million, five hundred and eighteen thousand, two forty-four, for a total of seven, close to seven point six million. And then pay special attention to the quarter of percent levy tax, the receipts report. One line under, it shows since inception, on or about two thousand and sixteen, we've collected eleven point six million just on the quarter of percent. So it just goes to show how vital it's been to collect that quarter of a percent tax, able to repair roads, et cetera, et cetera. Two thousand and twenty-four, the quarter of a percent levy came in at one point five million. And if you look at the last page, it just has a breakdown, two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-four actuals. And if anybody has any questions about the particular line items, just shoot me an email or you can come up to the office and visit, and we can, we can review that. But I'm just going to give a quick take on it. If you notice, the property tax, we saw a sixteen percent increase in property tax from two thousand and twenty-two. The income tax, the next line down is reported and now has been reported in the two-on-five income tax fund. And the third line down, the bed tax, that's just simply what the hotels pay the city. And the local government funds, all that is, is a state-levered shared taxes. And if you look at the intergovernment grants and contracts, in two thousand and twenty-three, it came in at a hundred and three thousand, and then it dipped way down to seven hundred and fifty dollars. That was attributable in two thousand and twenty-three to receiving an energy harbor grant, energy harbor, harbor grant. And if you go down further, the interest earnings, the city was able to receive greater interest earnings in two thousand and twenty-four compared to twenty-three. That's from the bank. And one, two lines down miscellaneous, basically that just encompasses rental income, donations, oil, gas lease. And if you go to other financing sources, it shows the two thousand and twenty-three Rita tax year refund. Eighty-two percent of the money came into the general fund. And if you go further down, under the expenditures, I did notice that there was an outlier there. Under administration, there was a steady increase in twenty-two to twenty-three. Then it kind of shot up in twenty-four to almost one point, one million. But that was attributable to the grant, so I wouldn't fret over that. Basically, that's the reimbursable grant. We have to expend the money first, and then the money comes back to us. So we had to provide a two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar advance from the general fund into the Lincoln Plaza Fund. So again, I wouldn't fret about that. We'll be collecting that money in twenty-five. That's pretty much it. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to take them.
Quick question, Sal. The revenues on that final page, interest earnings, we went from seventy-five thousand to seven hundred and twelve thousand in two years?
You said interest earnings?
Yeah, what was the?
Oh, it went from five oh two, five ninety-four?
Yeah.
To seven twelve?
Yeah, as I'm saying, we went from seventy-five to five hundred to seven twelve. Did we change something up or did we have a?
Back in twenty-two, I can't remember what interest rates were doing in twenty-two. I know interest rates were, they were up in twenty-three, which helps us collect the earnings. I'd have to go back and look at that seventy-five thousand.
Okay. As all, as members of the investment board, the city had, on our daily sweep account, we had set up a process whereby we weren't paying any fees for that, which was a nice thing. It saved us, saved the city a considerable amount of money. The bank then, believe it or not, came to us and said, "We've done an analysis. If you switch out of that account and start investing more into these accounts here," so it would, it would reduce our carryover, was our worry, but it looks like that didn't actually happen to the extent we thought, "you would get a greater amount of interest." And we started looking at the numbers of what that greater amount of interest was going to be, and it was obviously substantial. You see from seventy-five thousand to five hundred, two thousand dollars. So, you know, Sal, I can't remember the lady's name that he brought from the bank.
Bobby.
Bobby, that, to talk to us about it. But obviously, as members of the investment board, we're like, yes, what's the, what's the most amount we can safely put in there to increase that interest? And obviously, it's a mitigation.
Okay, so that was.
The most mu, the more money you're putting into that account, obviously, the greater interest is going to come in. And that's when we, as Burke was saying, as an investment committee, we decided then to, to do that, to make that action, to collect that extra interest earnings.
So a little over half a million dollars is now working for us instead of sitting there in case we need it? And it did not affect our, our fees? And we, and it's accessible at any time we need it within a twenty-four hour notice? So there was no downside to doing that.
Yeah, the interest earnings actually went up. The fees went up minimally compared to the interest earnings.
It, the offset, there was no difference.
There was no, right.
We have to pay fees now, but obviously, the difference is.
Because you're collecting more interest.
It's huge, so that was a great find.
Would you be interested in managing my 401K? Oh, did you? Okay. Yep, I, I'm in, so, okay.
We get a much better deal as a government entity than private citizens.
Can I ask a question, Sal?
Yes.
Now, looking at the numbers and dealing with the budget like you do, in your opinion, without that quarter percent income tax for the city streets and roads, would we be able to maintain the roads and, and continue to repave and do those things if we didn't have the quarter percent?
I, I think what would happen in that situation is you would have a lot of patching going on. Hot patch, I believe it's hot patch in the winter and cold patch in the summer. You would see a lot of patching that's occurring, yeah. Basically, since inception, I mean, we've received, I think it was eleven million. Yeah, it was eleven point six million, one point five in two thousand and twenty-four. I mean, that, that makes an impact on our, on our roads and, and bringing them, bringing them back up.
So without that, we'd go back to the old days of the big potholes and.
Yeah, you would go back to potholes and patching.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions for Mr. Salvino? Thank you. Safety and Services Director, Mr. Capazello?
Madam President, I do not have a formal report this evening, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Capazello? Thank you. I do not believe that Butch is here this evening. The Parks Director, or the intern Parks Director is out this evening sick, but Ms. Pastore did want me to share that they received a fifty thousand dollar grant. They got this in conjunction with the Salem Junior Baseball League, and that is to be used to, to redo the baseball and softball fields. So she was very excited about that this evening and wanted me to share. And moving on to the report of standing committees, Mr. Knoll is out this evening. Public Services Committee, Mr. Zellers?
Thank you, Madam President, I have no report.
Thank you. The rest is, residential's out. Downtown Committee, Mrs. Baer?
Madam President, I did attend the tabs meeting this week, and it was a review of a potential grant, and I did talk to them a little bit about plans and potential grant opportunities for the America Two Fifty Celebration, both this year and specifically for next year, July third and the fourth. I also do want to let you know that I have a meeting this week with Elevate and the SOD Center to discuss what would be an effective inspection schedule or process for our fire chief and his certified inspectors to maintain the safety of the buildings, particularly in the downtown in the C-three. And I will be working with Ms. Bricker in the, the carry forward on that inspection process.
Great, thank you. Rules and ordinances, Mr. Stockman?
Thank you, Madam President. My committee did meet on January seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, and I'd like to read these notes into record. The committee members that were present, myself, Andrew Knoll, Jane Bricker, Sarah Baer, Ron Zellers, Joe Capazulo, Chief Mason, and Mayor Cindy Dickey. I called the meeting to order. One of the items, Chief Mason addressed the council regarding commercial building inspections. One of the issues is not having the manpower for the inspections and what they entail. When the Inspection Bureau was set up, the department had nineteen employees that were running two hundred to three hundred calls. They now have sixteen employees running twenty-three hundred calls, including your ambulance calls. Chief Mason suggested if we had a full-time inspector and that had no other duties but to do inspections, that would help get inspections done more regularly. For example, our inspector had three inspections to do today, but we got an ambulance call. And two out of three inspections were canceled. A formula would need to be developed for inspections based on square footage. The, the larger buildings, businesses take a lot longer to do than a small gas station, obviously. We had a fire code in place along with the IPMC. We do have, I'm sorry, we do have a fire code in place along with the IPMC, but we need to make sure the fire department has all the tools necessary to be able to enforce these codes. An inspector would be hopefully a self-funded position. This issue will be discussed further after looking into some cost analysis with the chief, and I do believe Sarah and Jane. The second issue discussed was regarding House Bill three fifteen. That was just signed by Governor DeWine, allowing law enforcement agencies to charge fees for process and redaction of video footage from body cameras. Hopefully, this will keep people from guarding the police departments with minor things. And a request for body cam video can be, take hours to redact names and faces. This isn't a money-making thing. It'll only help pay and offset the cost for getting the video for people. Motion was made and passed three to zero to forward that ordinance to council. The committee also discussed animal ordinance again. Attorney Zellers came up with the changes to the ordinance, although it is not a one-size-fits-all ordinance. Mr. Stockman, myself stated, he spoke with the Health Department Commissioner, Kayla Kroll, regarding the changes to the ordinance, such as inspections, permits, fees, and applications. The Health Department will set up the application process and explain the expectations to the new homeowner. The permitting process will help ensure that animals are to be kept in inappropriate conditions. Mayor Dickey suggested that if the committee decides to move forward with the addition of the permitting process by the Health Department, that the ordinance be sent to the Health Department first to ensure the board feels the department is capable to accept the additional responsibility. The ordinance will be further revised by the Law Director to establish a permitting process and reviewed at the next Rules and Ordnances Committee meeting. That is the meeting minutes from that Rules and Ordnances Committee meeting. I, I will say this, that is coming up on our ordinances to do a first reading with today, and we will do a first reading with it, and then we'll evaluate it as things go. The Health Department has had opportune time to review the ordinance, and I believe they're going to do a second review of it with, with, with the mayor. So we are going to proceed with the first reading of it. The Rules and Ordnances Committee meeting will meet February fourth, prior to the council meeting at six o'clock. If we need to dig in more with the animal ordinance, we will, but I don't foresee that. What, the main thing we'll be going over is an event ordinance. The city of Salem right now has no ordinances for events. It's kind of like Wild West at this point. So we've been working on this, the, the mayor, myself, John, the police chief for a year and a half, and I consulted with Attorney Zellers over it also. But we should be able to finish most of it up at the next Rules and Ordnances Committee meeting. That's it. I appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Safety Committee, Ms. Bricker?
Thank you, Madam President. My committee has not met, therefore, I have no formal report.
Thank you. Economic Development, Mr. Gayno?
Thank you, Madam President. My committee has not met. I do need to get at least two meetings on the books, so I will be sent out emails here soon for those.
Great, thank you. For introduction of ordinances and resolutions this evening, Jake, you're on the Finance Committee, right?
I am.
Would you mind doing Andrew's first one?
Sure, so we're just going to do the first reading, right?
Yeah. It's, uh, resolution three.
Okay, so I guess just, I would ask that the clerk read ordinance two-five-zero, one-two-eight, dash, zero-three, by title only for its first reading, first reading this evening? Yeah, first reading this evening.
Madam Clerk, will you please read Resolution zero-three by title only?
Being a resolution to accept a donation to the city of Salem from the Columbia County Commissioners and to express appreciation for their generous donation of twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of defraying costs to police officers assigned on a part-time or a full-time basis to the Columbia County Drug Task Force and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Zellers, you have Resolution four and five this evening.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that council rules be suspended. Is that resolution? I'm sorry.
We don't have enough.
We can only read.
Oh.
Do we necessarily need to read?
Well, actually, you are correct. This one didn't come out of committee, did it?
Neither mine, really.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, he might be right. We might have to suspend council rules. Well, we're not going to pass it though, correct?
No.
So no, we don't need to pa, you don't actually need to suspend council rules. Only if it's going to be passed in the evening, you have to give it. If it hasn't been here twenty-four hours, or it didn't go to committee, you have to suspend council rules if it's going to be passed in the same night. So you're not passing it tonight, you can't. You're only giving it one reading. So just ask for one reading, first reading.
So we're only going to have one?
Yeah, because you don't have enough.
The question is, if, if we're going to pass these the next Tuesday, like mine is in urgency.
Here's why, if you, if you don't mind, Madam President, here's why I would suggest you do it. I assume we're going to have enough people at the meeting on the fourth, I think you said it was. But if we can't, we might have to set a meeting between now and then to give it its second reading and then the third reading on the fourth. So I think just out of an abundance of caution, I would ask that you guys give these.
We don't want to mess it up.
Yeah. But let me find that rule, because that rule has been monkeyed with a few times over the years.
Are you all able to attend on the fourth? Jake, can you attend on the fourth? That could be broken.
Next two weeks I'll be out, but.
Just in spirit.
We, we really need to all be here to do all three readings, because we're also going to have the streets one.
It's very likely you're suspending the streets one. Are still going to be.
I don't know.
I don't remember.
It's the, it's the recreational purposes, not the streets one.
Yeah, the streets one is, uh, it won't hurt to do it.
Yeah, I tell you what, just out of caution, let's go back to, to Mr. Zellers' idea of suspending council rules, just in case. So you would have to sus, let's suspend council rules just so you can bring it out safely.
Suspend council rules?
Yeah, for one, still only going to get one reading.
Is there, you already said it, so we'll just, we'll just get a, is there a second? Mr. Stockman?
We're on four, right?
Yes, for council.
Okay, Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Ms. Bricker?
Yes.
Mr. Gayno?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Council rules are suspended, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President.
Guess we're just doing a reading?
Are we going to have three readings?
Can't. So first reading only? You can't do three readings, so are you asking for the first reading?
All right, so I ask council for the first reading.
Madam Clerk, will you please read Resolution four by title only?
Being a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for a one mil renewal levy for recreational purposes and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Zellers, Resolution five?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that council rules be suspended so that Resolution oh five can be introduced this evening.
Is there a second? Mrs. Baer?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Ms. Bricker?
Yes.
Mr. Gayno?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Council rules are suspended, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that clerk.
Read.
Read the resolution so that we can have the first reading this evening.
Madam Clerk, will you please read Resolution five by title only?
Being a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for a one mil renewal levy for recreational purposes and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Zellers, Ordinance six?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I move that council rules be suspended for Ordinance oh six so that it may be introduced this evening.
Is there a second? Mr. Stockman?
Mrs. Baer?
Yes.
Ms. Bricker?
Yes.
Mr. Gayno?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Yes.
Council rules are suspended, Mr. Zellers.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask that Madam Clerk read Ordinance oh six by title only so that we may have the first reading this evening.
Madam Clerk, will you please read Ordinance six by title only?
Being an ordinance authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to advertise for bids and enter into contracts for the purchase of gasoline and diesel to be used by the city of Salem for up to a one-year period and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Stockman, Ordinance seven and eight?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to suspend council rules so that Ordinance two-five-zero, one-two-eight, dash, zero-seven can be considered tonight.
Is there a second?
It's been brought out.
Actually, I don't think we do on this one.
We didn't need to, I thought it was the other one.
Yeah, because this one.
I thought it was the excavating one.
Yes, this one's been discussed ad nauseam, so then we don't need council rules.
Nope, Madam President, I move that clerk read ordinance, again, two-five-zero, one-two-eight, dash, zero-seven for its first reading tonight.
Madam Clerk, will you please read Ordinance seven by title only?
Being an ordinance modifying and amending Chapter five oh five, Part five of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Salem regarding animals and fowl.
Thank you. Mr. Stockman, Ordinance eight?
This is where I got mixed up, because I do need to suspend council rules. And I, Madam President, can I? And I, Madam President, can I move to suspend council rules so that Ordinance Two-Five-Zero-One-Two-Eight-Dash-Zero-Eight can be considered tonight?
Is there a second? Ms. Bricker?
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
Ms. Bricker?
Yes.
Mr. Gano?
Yes.
Mr. Stockman?
Yes.
Mr. Zellers?
Thank you.
Yes.
Council rules are suspended. Mr. Stockman.
Thank you, Madam President. I move the clerk read Ordinance Two-Five-Zero-One-Two-Eight-Dash-Zero-Eight by title only for its first reading tonight.
Madam Clerk, will you please read Ordinance Eight by title only?
Being an ordinance creating and adopting Title Seven, Chapter Nine, sixty-one of Part Nine of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Salem regarding excavations.
And Ms. Bricker, you have Resolution Nine this evening.
I moved that we suspend council rules so that Resolution Two-Five-Zero-One-Two-Eight-Dash-O-nine can be introduced this evening.
Is there a?
Didn't you guys discuss, you did, you discussed this, even though I came from your committee.
Sorry.
I put your name on it because it's safety, so yeah, you, you wouldn't need council rules, so first reading.
All right. I move that the clerk read Resolution Two-Five-Zero-One-Two-Eight-Dash-O-nine by title only this evening.
Madam Clerk, will you please read Resolution Nine by title only?
Being a resolution authorizing the City of Salem Police Department to charge fees for the processing and redaction of video footage from body cameras, dash, fore cameras, and jail surveillance camera systems as contemplated in House Bill Three-Fifteen and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Do we want to do pleasure of council and then go into executive session?
Can I interrupt real quick? I had a question on the ordinances.
For a dollar. For a dollar.
For a dollar. If I can have a dollar. The ordinance I read did not have the emergency clause with it on the excavations on the agenda. My question is, when we read it, Tuesday, can we add the, or do I need to add it?
Okay, yeah, my suggestion would be then. Well, I'll send you and you guys an amended version of it adding.
For the next meeting, so I don't have to worry about adding it the next time.
Yes.
For pleasure of council, Mr. Stockman.
Thank you very much.
I know how much you love to go first.
Uh, not my favorite thing in the world, going first, you know that. But I would like to send my personal prayers out to several people I know that have had personal loss in their lives. And I just want them to know that my prayers are with them and these, these people that I'm thinking about that, that I'm praying for, so.
Thank you. Ms. Bricker?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have anything this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Zellers?
Thank you, Madam President. I have nothing.
Thank you. Mrs. Bear?
On a sad note, condolences to the family of David Stratton. He has been a wonderful friend to the Historical Society and also First Friends Church. He was a great man in our community, and he will be missed.
Thank you. And Mr. Gano?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to offer condolences to Joe Capazolo and the defeat of his beloved Irish at the hands of my alma mater last week. I'm just glad my voice has returned so I could deliver this message to you. You're welcome.
At this time, council will be going into executive session, so if you'd like, there's really no need to stick around because we've already gone through everything, so.
We may have to vote to send something to the Law Director.
So there might be action afterwards.
Yeah, there might be, on one of the issues, there might be action. I would think there would be action.
Okay.
So.
Your choice.
Morgan has to stay unless he wants me just to tell him what we decided. Just send it to the Law Director to create one.
It's like your dysfunctional family at Thanksgiving. That's how I like to have our meetings. We also need to make sure we go offline.